A majority of the board is present, therefore a quorum is present and the meeting is qualified to consider the agenda items. This evening, we're glad to have our students back with us. The Rogers College Senior High J R O T C under the direction of Colonel Darryl Ping will conduct this evening's flag salute.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know Board Member Shelton will be proud to introduce tonight's cadets.
My pleasure. The Wolfhockers of High School, J R O T C is under the leadership of Colonel Darryl Ping. Our pledge leader this evening was Chase Davis. The color guard included Chloe Wadley, Naomi Purnell, Jasmine Johnson, and Ricky Dobbs, three of whom are seniors graduating next week. Thank you all for being here.
I want to remind everyone, if you wish to address the board, you need to sign up with our clerk. As a reminder, there is a five-minute limit to your remarks and that includes all of the items that you are speaking to. Upon approval of the consent agenda, we will not accept any additional speakers. With that, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Before I consider the agenda, Dr. Guest, are there any changes?
Yes, Madam President. We have a couple of changes. First of all, please withdraw Consent Item E11. We will bring this back to you for your consideration at a future meeting. And then on Item F3, there was a very important word actually left out of that language in the recommendation. So if you could please correct it to read as follows. The board will suspend Requirements of Policy 2405 and allow certain seniors who have not completed all requirements for a diploma. So we've omitted probably the most important word in that entire description, which was "not." So if you could make that correction, those are the only two changes, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Guest. We have a motion, so I'll call for the vote unless there are any questions. Ms. Fay.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank everyone for being here tonight. It's exciting. Last time we were together, school had not gone back into session yet. So it's great to have all of the kids back. And our flag presentation, I'm horrible at the march and everything. I did all by myself, just kidding. With that, we'll move over to Dr. Guest's special presentations and awards.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very excited to share several things with you tonight. We're going to start with our friends from Jackson Elementary School. So under the leadership of Principal Elmer Thomas, we have the Jackson Chorus who have joined us here tonight. The chorus is comprised of 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th grade students under the direction of Angela Silman, Alex Geiger, and Charity Outlaw. And they will be performing Michael Jackson's "Man in the Mirror." So welcome, we look forward to this performance. Thank you so much. I got so excited and distracted, I didn't follow through. Thank you so much to everyone at Jackson Elementary School. Thank you to the chorus, to the directors, to the leadership, and all the teachers and families at Jackson. And I know we're going to be talking about your school here in a little bit. And so it's wonderful to have you a part of our meeting tonight. Several years ago, we took a renewed interest in the building of our STEAM offerings across the district. So a lot of people refer to it as STEM or STEAM or STEM. So it's science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. And through listening sessions conducted with stakeholders, from parents to business leaders to industry leaders, teachers and students, of course, we created a blueprint for how to grow our offerings so that students could engage, more students could be engaged in STEAM activities across the district. So these range from embedded classroom experiences to participation in events that are hosted by the Tulsa Regional STEM Alliance. And tonight, our Math and Science Director Gina Cook is going to share a quick overview of the STEAM focus for the 2017-2018 school year. This includes featuring the Lee Coding Club with Principal Aubrey Flowers. I know we have members of the Lee community here tonight. And also the Memorial High School Robotics Club under Principal Schmidt's leadership. Representatives from the schools will share about their recent successes with coding and with robotics. So welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Guest, members of the board, faculty, staff, and guests. Our focus this year has been on enhancing the grade level STEAM experience pilots to ensure that we create a quality cornerstone experience that we can have the capacity to expand to all of our students at all of these grade levels. Our pilot experiences are in 2nd, 4th, and 5th grades. On this slide, you will see the grade level STEAM experience by the numbers. We had 1,432 students in 59 classes across 41 teachers in 27 schools participate in our STEAM programs this year. I'm real excited to bring you those numbers. Those are last year's numbers, actually, and we'll have next year's, or this year's numbers for you as soon as we can. Just to share a little bit about each of the grade levels with you. This is the 2nd grade. They focus on plant and animal adaptations in partnership with the Tulsa Botanic Gardens. They use the engineering as elementary curriculum. And they were able to attend a field experience at the Botanic Gardens where they were learning about pollinators and even got to design their own. Our 4th grade is studying energy transfer with partners from the Geo Science Center through funding with OERB, as well as participating in a field experience at Guthrie Green to look at geothermal energy. And 4th graders are also meeting with engineers from One Oak and also are using engineering as, is elementary, as their curriculum. They even get to design their own solar ovens. The 5th grade classrooms are looking at the nitrogen cycle. They were, we partnered with Camp Lockridge, and they were introduced to concepts of the nitrogen cycle and its effects on the environment. Students were able to consider methods to combat or control the amount of nitrogen released in our environments and designed a test, then designed and tested a closed aquaponic system as a method of prevention. Outside of the school experience is also really important. These are all programs that are in and about the Tulsa area that support our students as well. These are not an exclusive list, there are probably many others, but this is just a sampling of those. It is through our STEAM programs that schools have had the opportunity to participate in STEAM events. I want to turn over the program to the Lee Coding, Elementary Coding Club who recently participated in the Heartland Gaming Expo at the University of Tulsa and let them share and highlight their experience.
I'm a teacher at Lee and I'm their sponsor. This is my second year to have been involved in the Coding Club, and I just wanted to say I'm really happy to have been able to provide this opportunity to my students. It's truly a partnership. It's not just me, it's several people who made this happen. And this is Mr. Mooney, and he's going to tell you just a little bit about, more about it. I had several students who really were unable to attend. This is Carver's, a 6th grade orientation. And so we're grateful for the students who are here.
I'll give an introduction first. Is there another one? All right. Is there another, the last slide? Okay. My name is Daniel Mooney, and I started the Coding Club. We started January 2016 at Emerson Elementary. And it started originally just as pure coding, teaching young kids how to program computers. But when I heard, I'd never heard STEAM, I'd heard of STEM. But with the introduction of the A, that is video game development, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And so the Emerson Club quickly evolved to building a video game. And video game development, I make video games for a living, and when I say that, people inevitably think, okay, well, isn't that great to play video games? Well, no. You know, video games is engineering and coding, it's multiple disciplines within art, it's multiple disciplines within audio and sound design, it's logic and critical thinking, it's teamwork and collaboration, it's working together to reach long-term goals. And I thought that would be a really great thing to bring to the kids. And so to grow the program, TU now has a video game degree, which is kind of common amongst several universities in the country. And I approached TU and tried to form a partnership with TU in their gaming degree. And through that, we now use TU students, computer science students, to help grow the program. And then over the course of the past five semesters, we've gone from one school, starting at Emerson, to eight schools and over 250 kids now. And the end of the year sort of goal is participating in TU's Heartland Gaming Expo, which is a great way for the kids to showcase all of their hard work and meet other developers not quite like themselves, because we're the only elementary schools, but independent developers and some professional developers. But really get to see people play their game, which is really a fantastic experience. And Lee won first place this year. And so, let me just quickly, one last thing. Let me just say thank you to all the faculty sponsors. Thank you for TPS for allowing us to continue. Coding Club was actually modeled after Byte Club, and I received a lot of guidance from Gary Perswell. So thank you, Gary. I appreciate that.
My name is Miller Mattson. I like Coding Club because I got to create sprites with my friends. I learned that everything is from scratch whenever you're creating a video game. Everybody did different things. Some people did drawings and some people did coding. It was a group effort.
Hi, I am Asher. What I liked about Coding Club was seeing how games were made and seeing how we made each part of the game and how it fit together.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you all so much, and congratulations again. That's very impressive and exciting to see that your incredibly hard work and so forth paid off in such a highly recognized way. So, and thanks so much to each of you. And I think when I think of STEAM, I think of your classroom, Ms. Stanford. I remember the FISH project, for example, and it really makes STEAM come to life when I think about the work that you do. So thank you. Okay, and then we're not hearing from Memorial, is that right? Okay, go Memorial, yay Chargers! All right, and I think their Robotics Club at Memorial is one that's really well-known all across the city and across the state for that matter. So excited for the work that they're doing as well. Okay, so lastly, I want to extend huge congratulations to Sarah Berry, who is one of our fabulous art teachers, whose classroom and work I've also had the chance to experience, and it's awesome. At Salk Elementary School, the leadership of Tracy Thomas. She has been selected as this year's music teacher recipient for the Oklahoma State Superintendent's Award for Arts Excellence. This is a huge accomplishment, very exciting, and she's well-deserving of this incredible honor. And so we wanted to have Ms. Berry come and tell us a little bit about that experience and so that we could also cheer for you and congratulate you and thank you for everything that you do, Ms. Berry.
Thank you, Dr. Guest, and members of our board. I was privileged to receive this award. I'll be charging a quarter afterwards if anybody wants to look at it up close, because I live on a teacher salary. I was privileged to receive this award from Superintendent, State Superintendent Joy Hoffmeister, a few weeks ago. And yes, it is the Oklahoma Alliance Arts Education Award. And it is a recognition and a representation of achievements that have come throughout my life, throughout my career. My achievements are not found, however, on a plaque or on a certificate, but in the relationships with the people that I have the opportunity to serve in Tulsa Public Schools. In the past four years, as a chair for the Elementary Music Department, some of these relationships have been in the form of mentoring music teachers in our district, others have been in the form of working with my colleagues to prepare and deliver professional development that is both effective and meaningful to the importance of music and education. Some of the best relationships that I have come through, though, are with my students and with their families. Many of them are scarred by academic, social, and emotional challenges. They are the children that I say have invisible talent. I choose to find that talent, and I choose to find that potential and try to shape it into something that they can see in themselves for who they really are. And once they see that, there's no way to stop them from completing their potential. Currently, I have students that are achieving in ukulele, solo work, ensemble work, and festival choir, which our festival will be next Tuesday night. If anybody would like to come to it, it is free. That is for our 4th, 5th, and 6th graders that will be selected from different elementaries. And that will be at East Central Junior High at 7:00. This year, we have focused on staging a musical from the book Pete the Cat Saves Christmas with our 2nd graders at Salk. And our upper grades have participated in the Carnegie Hall Linkup Program in cooperation with the Tulsa Symphony Orchestra, which I've had the privilege to be working with from its inception, I think, three years ago. Next year, our plans at Salk will be to increase our number of performances and add an after-school choir program to our extracurricular choices. Our schools need the arts, both visual art and drama, music, band, choir. By the way, you guys did a great job. It's hard to follow. But for some students, as you can see, they follow the path of engineering, science, and math, and that becomes their future. And they excel in those things because it's academic, and they're good at that. But for those who have invisible talent, their destiny is in my hands. For some, that music, for some music is all that they have to hang on to. Sometimes it's the reason why they come to school. So if I don't find them, I don't know who will. If I don't reach them, I don't know who will. If I don't help them see their potential, I don't know who will. Because it's that invisible talent that they don't even know they have. This is my destiny because I am a teacher. May all of our scholars be blessed to find who they really are as we guide them into the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I don't know how many of you all have ever gone to the Elementary Music Festival before, but it is absolutely wonderful. And Ms. Berry and her colleagues just put in a huge amount of work into that festival. This is a rescheduled festival for this year, but they do a wonderful job and the students do as well. They work very hard to practice and prepare and carry out that incredible performance. So congratulations again on this really special and prestigious award, Ms. Berry. And Madam President, that concludes our presentations for tonight. Thank you, Dr. Guest. From there, we'll move to the approval of the minutes. Item D, approve the minutes of March 12, 2018 special, and April 16, 2018 regular meetings of the board. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Any questions or corrections for the minutes? I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
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 Aye. That brings us to our action agenda, and we have several items on the action. Consent. I'm excited to get to the action agenda. That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion regarding the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Fay?
Aye.
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 Aye. We'll move to the action agenda, and we still have several items on the action agenda. And we'll start, we have some speakers regarding F1, and we'll begin there. We'll start with Mr. John Hefheins, who plans to speak to F1, G1, and G2.
Greetings to our Honorable Superintendent Dr. Guest, our Madam President Susan Scriber, and each of our Honorable Tulsa Public School Board members. We are thankful to all the citizens of this great city, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It's a joy to be with you on the 7th day of May in the year of our loving Lord Jesus Christ, 2018. Yes, thank you, Madam President, and thank you to all of Tulsa's great citizens. F1, on the renaming of the Andrew Jackson Elementary School, while Andrew Jackson did have many strengths moving forward, Unity Learning Academy may well be the right name. We see Jesus Christ, the Word of God, is into unity. In the Good Book, we can read about dwelling in unity and how it's close to God's heart. And also, the Bible speaks of coming into the unity of the faith. And one day, according to the book in the Bible, Ephesians, Chapter 1 and Verse 10, we see more about unity. It says, "In the fullness of times, God is uniting all things in heaven and on earth." So again, you know, Unity Learning Academy may well be the right name for this special school. G1, Jesus loves your children and He desires for all of us to be in health. This sounds similar to what TPS, you all, are trying to do by renaming, renewing, excuse me, renewing this contract with the Tulsa City County Health Department, trying to keep our children healthy. Thank you. Teaching and learning, G2, a recommendation, purchase services from Hatching Results LLC, send San Diego, California, to provide professional development for counselors. May we choose counseling service providers who have a heart for our Lord Jesus and can hear from the Holy Spirit. Thank you. And G15, McKinley, approval of a, approve a drainage, excuse me, approve a drainage easement with the City of Tulsa that will allow stormwater sewer improvements to be made. President William McKinley was a man of prayer, and so, it's a great school. Let's say yes to this improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Also speaking to F1, Anne Songkeah. Apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Good evening, Tulsa Public Board of Education Superintendent Dr. Gist. I was heartened to hear several months ago that Tulsa Public Schools had at last started the formal process to change the name of the school where I teach, Andrew Jackson. Tulsa Public Schools has created a protocol and a timeline, and we're choosing to lead the community to do what other cities and school districts have been doing across the country. Tulsa Public Schools is working towards correcting historical trauma. In 1838 and in 1839, as part of President Andrew Jackson's Indian Removal Policy, the Cherokee Nation was forced to give up its land east of the Mississippi River and to migrate to an area in present-day Oklahoma. The Cherokee people called this journey "The Trail of Tears" because of its devastating effects. An estimated 4,000 died from hunger, exposure, and disease, men, women, and children. As an educator at Jackson for the past seven years, and as a member of the Cherokee Nation and knowing its history, it has been difficult to identify my school by its formal name. I only identify it by Jackson or its mascot, Andy. Today, I am proud to acknowledge that a new day has arrived in Tulsa Public Schools. I will proudly call the school I teach at, Unity Learning Academy. Adieu. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robert Hilton will also speak to F1.
Good evening, Council. As a parent of Jackson Elementary for the past 25 years, I've had four boys, and my current daughter is graduating this year from Jackson. The reason why I support the name Unity Learning Academy is because what the school teaches within the community, it's just not a school that our kids go to. We learn about, we have different ethnic backgrounds in this neighborhood. And one thing that we teach our children is that everybody's equal. Everybody is the same. There's no difference in skin, race, or religion. And that's why we teach unity at this school, one of few schools that probably have two parents who are still there after 25 years. And it's because what's being taught. Our kids come out with a very high degree of equality, and in today's present society of racial issues, this is something I believe that will set the standard for all Tulsa Public Schools. You know, that we can get beyond everything if we learn to work in unity. Thank you.
Thank you. Also speaking to F1, Ms. Gwen Hawkins Minor.
Good evening, Dr. Gist and to the Board of Education. Very nervous, yet highly excited about being here and what is on the agenda. I am the other parent who have had my children to attend Jackson Elementary for 20, I've been there volunteering for 24 years. My eldest is not here. He is in Vegas, and that's the only reason he is not here. I have five other children who are here. A unified force of a caring and professional community of teachers and staff members who propel every child to succeed beyond their neighborhood's socioeconomic status and soar, as eagles do, to unlimited and unyielding heights in academics, opportunities, and privileges to become productive individuals who will give back into their community. That's what Jackson has done for my children. Jackson reminds me of, I have a daycare center. And Jackson School, the teachers, the staff, the volunteers, remind me of the stories of the three bears, the three pigs, and the wolf. And in so saying that, if one, like the one pig got in trouble, and then it went to the other pig's home, and then the other pig went to the other pig's home, well, that's what the teachers and the staff and the principals, that's what they do at Jackson. If one teacher could not solve, fully solve the challenge of a student at Jackson, then they consulted at the mentor or the help and assistance of the next teacher. I'm a witness to this. I'm not just speaking just to speak, but I'm a witness of my children. And so, I've seen as many as two teachers or staff, a principal, together, come up with a solution to help my individual children and the other children that attended Jackson also. I've seen teachers and staff members go so far as to walk some of the children home in the neighborhoods. I've had teachers to send my children home and my other daycare children home with homework for the summer so that we could maintain their knowledge level for that year and that they would not come in and lose anything. I've seen, together, we come in, the teachers have come in and helped every parent, which is why my children are no longer there, but I'm still a PTA office at Jackson Elementary because I believe in what they have done for my children. I see what they're doing for other children, and I'm going to support them as long as I can. The community who laid a foundation for my family helped me to lay a firm foundation that defeated the giant, the wolf, which was burglary, gang, theft, murder, gang members. My children grew up in the midst of that neighborhood. And so, the three pigs, the staff of Jackson, came together and defeated the wolf, the violence, and the gang members in my neighborhood. I'm going to have my children to just come forward and just to tell you their accomplishment, that Jackson helped us to lay the foundation for their lives.
Hello, my name is Ormond Hawkins. I'm 23 years old. I went to Jackson, Carver Middle School, Booker T., Washington High School, got my associate from Tulsa Community College, and will get my bachelor's at Oklahoma State University.
On this Saturday, he graduates from OSU.
Hi, my name is Olivia Hawkins. I went to Jackson Elementary, then Carver, and then Booker T., and now I'm at OSU, double majoring in Nutritional Science and Spanish.
Hi, my name is Sharonda Holmes, and actually, I graduated from Jackson Elementary School. I have two kids that has graduated. One is in college now. One goes to OSU, and another one goes to Baycom. I also have a host of nieces that also went. One is graduating with a bachelor's degree in communication and minoring in Spanish. And then I have another one that goes to OSU that's going to be her junior year.
My name is Orlando Hawkins. I'm 25. I went to Jackson, Carver, and Booker T. I got a Nutritional Science degree from OSU, Oklahoma State University, and I'm getting my master's at the end of the summer from Walden University.
Thank you. Item F1 recommends we rename the current Andrew Jackson Elementary School, whose name was rescinded on the 2nd of April, 2018, to Unity Learning Academy. In accordance with Policy 8102, an ad hoc committee met to consider renaming Andrew Jackson Elementary School. The committee discussed the nature of Jackson Elementary School's relationship with its community, and also considered the results of a community survey. Where 31 survey participants were in favor of Unity Learning Academy. The majority of them were in favor of that new name. Ultimately, the committee made the determination that the character of the school community was most fitting for the new name and believed that Unity Learning Academy is the right choice for the new school name. Is there a motion to approve item F1?
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the matter. Ms. Marshall.
I would like to just make a statement that as we went through the process, it was most enjoyable to sit with the staff, with the parents, the students that sat in on our meetings, and there was no bickering, no discussion. It was a unified meeting from the onset because the group had one goal, and that was to come up with a name that would best express the character of the community that had been created around Jackson. And someone threw out the name Unity. And it was like someone had put a 300-watt light bulb in the room because the light began to shine, and everyone got it. And they said that that expresses who we are. Unity Learning Academy. It defines who we are and what we do. We care for one another, we take care of one another, and we educate our children. And I think we've heard the testimonies of the children here. The witness degrees, bachelor's degrees, master's degrees. My jaws are hurting from smiling. I got excited. And I can't help but say, Unity Learning Academy is the epitome of what we are here to do as Tulsa Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. We have gotten some questions regarding the policy governing what a school name can be for, whether it's a person, or a place, or a street, or a neighborhood, or an academic theme. And obviously, the name of the facility plays a key role in the public image of the school and the community. And for that reason, we've spent a lot of time on that this year in thinking about it and going back and revisiting and further discussions, and really taking our time to hear from the school communities as the policy requires. And often, schools are named after individuals, but the policy explains that it can also honor an organization or an entity that has given significant contribution to our community. And another option is for it to reflect an academic theme of the school. And I think Unity Learning Academy honors and reflects the academic theme and really, some of the individuals, although not specific folks, of what we currently call Jackson Elementary. So, I'm going to be supporting the recommendation proudly tonight. If there's no other discussion, then I will call for the vote. Ms. Shelton.
Aye.
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 Aye. We will move on now to item F2. Before we take comments on F2, Dr. Decker will be reading a statement regarding item F2.
Great, thank you, President Schreiber. Lee Elementary formed an ad hoc renaming committee led by Gary Percival, and he's asked me to read the statement from that committee tonight. It's a little long, so bear with me. The Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education rescinded the name of Robert E. Lee Elementary effective July 1, 2018. Board Member Gary Percival submitted a nomination to rename the school Lee School, triggering Board Policy 8102 and the formation of an ad hoc committee to review nomination requests and seek community input prior to a recommendation to a Board of Education. The Lee Elementary Ad hoc Renaming Committee met April 30, 2018, to make a statement to the Board of Education. Members of the ad hoc committee included Gary Percival as the chair, Dr. Phyllis Lovett, Sue Ann Bell, Principal Aubrey Flowers, staff members Rachel Humphrey and Kristen Miller, parents Sarah Donahue, Dr. Tommy Kern as an alumnus, and Valerie Osgood Sutton as an alumnus, and Dr. Erica Townsend Bell. Previously, the ad hoc committee met on March 12, March 21, and April 20. The committee submitted a statement for the name Lee School that appeared on the March 15 Tulsa School Board Meeting Agenda. The school board deferred the matter, suggesting the committee take more time to consider community input. As such, the ad hoc committee chose to convene a survey, originally intended to occur in paper form and administered by TPS employees. As a result of the walkout, this option was no longer viable due to other demands on TPS employees' time. Instead, during the week of April 23, the ad hoc committee executed an online survey. This ran parallel to classroom conversations facilitated by Principal Flowers to engage students in age-appropriate dialogue regarding the school name change. These two feedback mechanisms were vital in shaping the final statement. The ad hoc committee met for a final time on April 30 to evaluate this data. There were 837 respondents to the online survey. The makeup of the survey included 382 Lee families, 32 Lee educators, and 423 other. Their survey revealed that 59.6% of survey respondents strongly agreed with the proposed school name of Lee School. Of currently families and faculty, 67.2% strongly agreed with the proposed name of Lee School. The next two highest yielding results were Harper Lee Elementary, with which 14.6% of respondents strongly agreed, and John Hope Franklin Elementary, with which 9.4% of respondents strongly agreed. Full survey results can be found in Attachment 1. Throughout the classroom conversations, students shared their observations and feelings about the school with a focus on the present as well as goals for our shared future. Student examples include feelings of safety, generosity, and a sense of community. While a few students expressed concerns regarding the school's former namesake, the majority of students expressed their understanding of the school's identity and common known name of Lee School, citing recent history as a time of redefinition. Representing the thoughts of many, a student shared, "I know Lee is a school with good teachers, hard-working children, and kind families." The ad hoc committee also considered several other data points, including personal contacts of the committee members, input to Board Member Percival, and a Tulsa World online survey dated March 15, 2018. The committee recognizes that within all these data points, there are those that firmly stand firmly at both ends of the discussion, from "the name should never have been rescinded" to "the name should change completely." to “the name should change completely.” This process has been messy, uncomfortable, and sometimes divisive, but nonetheless plays a vital role in continuing to foster a community aligned with the school’s guiding principles and values, as well as Tulsa Public Schools’ Destination Excellence Strategic Plan. We respect the opinions of all involved and are very grateful to everyone that took the time to participate in this process. After carefully evaluating community input, the ad hoc committee, with consensus but not complete unanimity, supports the statement to name the facility Lee School. This statement should be seen as thoughtful work completed by a diverse group of volunteers. Many hours of discussion went into trying to create an agreement with the greatest of intention for this community at heart. It is the committee’s hope that this community can reconcile and work together to forge a new identity for the next 100 years, while reflecting on the history of its previous 99 years as a continuous example of what public education can and should look like when all stakeholders work together. Additionally, the committee’s statement includes: A) That this renaming be understood as part of an ongoing process in which tangible work around diversity and inclusion continues to occur, and which is supported by all stakeholders in our community. To advance the ongoing intention of equitable learning experiences, the Lee faculty and staff is committed to unwavering engagement of equity and diversity within the classroom community, as well as collaborative efforts within Tulsa Public Schools, such as the Designing Equity Work in partnership with the National Equity Project. In regards to our Lee community representation, an example of future efforts will include working towards a PTA leadership that is more reflective of our diverse student body. B) That the Centennial Celebration next school year provide opportunities to reimagine a diverse public education experience over the next 100 years for our students and their families while connecting with those who experienced public education at Lee firsthand during the last 100 years. As part of this celebration, we would like to see the community involved in the rebranding of Lee School. Ideas such as those already heard from students in classroom conversations serve as a starting point. However, further engagement opportunities will allow all stakeholders to be a part of the celebration of this amazing school and to engage in the process of identifying what Lee does and should stand for going forward. These collaborative efforts should be seen as the beginning of a new era for Lee School while celebrating our past, present, and future achievements. C) That the district supports the past, current, and future work happening at Lee relating to diversity education, equitable teaching practices, and community collaboration. Building on work that began at our school 30 years ago, this is part of a larger, more permanent project of redefining Lee as a model for a collaborative and forward-looking school community, rather than a school strongly associated with any particular individual or specific name. We look forward to partnering with other Tulsa Public Schools, as well as schools across the nation, in sharing lessons learned in this timely and important work.
Thank you, Dr. Decker. We’ll call on our first speaker, Linda Dickey-Hilsebeck.
Good evening. I’m Linda Hilsebeck. I am a product of Tulsa Public Schools. I went to Lincoln Elementary, Horseman Junior High School, and with Ann Sonkey, Ann Alberti Sonkey. We graduated from Tulsa Central in 1970. I’ve spent my whole teaching career in Tulsa Public Schools. I started at Wilson Junior High School. I moved to Key Elementary, where Daniel Moody was one of my students. And now, I started at Lee in 1993. And I’m in my 24th year. I taught two of my youngest children at Lee, and now I teach Miller Mattson, my great-nephew, who was representing the coding club, and two other great nephews and a great niece at Lee. I love Lee. But let me add one thing before I start about that. Gary Percival, our school board member, has been our crossing guard every single Monday morning for the last seven years. And I just love Gary Percival. Give him a hand, folks. I’m here in support of the recommendation of the Lee Ad hoc Committee to name Robert E. Lee School. The first month I taught at Lee was the 75th anniversary of Lee School, when Susan Savage was the mayor, and Elizabeth Savage, her daughter, was our student, and she came, and we had a wonderful celebration. It will totally be outdone by our celebration next September, however. I thought about what I would say tonight many sleepless nights since August. It’s been a very divisive topic for our staff, and our parents, and our families. I did not speak at the first School Board Meeting because I knew saving the name of Robert Edward Lee would be a foregone conclusion, knowing the opinions of the majority of the school board. I did not speak at the March 15 meeting because I presumed Gary Percival’s recommendation to rename Lee School would pass. I only hope that the beautiful etching that has hung over my desk for 24 years and everything else that was taken from our school over spring break will find a place of honor, hopefully at the Tulsa Historical Society. I am here tonight to speak for myself, others I have talked to this year, former principals, former teachers, former students, former parents, and a whole lot of friends who overwhelmingly agree that the name should stay Lee School. I talked to Mr. Bob, our crossing guard, who was our crossing guard for over 20 years, who we recently lost, and he just couldn’t imagine why we would want to change the name to anything else but Lee School. I also am speaking for someone who can’t speak tonight. Carter Marsh was a Lee alum, Lee parent, volunteer, and he was owner of Prairie Productions. He made all of our t-shirts, my Jump Broke for Lee banners, and I always had an argument with Carter because I always wanted Lee bigger. Well, I finally got it, and that’s why we have the Carter Marsh CM over our hearts. He was the most avid alumni of Lee School. He reflected on his time at Lee over and over and over and was one of our best volunteers. And I’ve often thought, what would Carter do? Well, he would want it to be Lee School also. If you need concrete reasons why to keep it Lee School, there are five permanent sign, 13 benches that say Lee School, two bought by the student council, and 11 bought by the foundation. And we will celebrate our 100th anniversary next September. I said I went to Lincoln Elementary, which was closed, and they tore the art room and the science room down, and now it’s Lee Plaza Shopping Center. There won’t be a 100th anniversary for Lincoln. There won’t be a 100th anniversary for Horseman. It is now a parking lot for Tulsa Community College. And while Central High School was our one square block of soul downtown, it now houses the electric company. But we still have a wonderful school on Edison, which I’ve served on the foundation for. And if you need any other reasons, our acronym we’ve used for years and years is Leaders Excelling Every Day. It’s on our banner, it’s on our shirts. We also have Peace Lovely, Live Lovely. We are in a league of our own, and in closing, we are Lee. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor Painter-Wolff.
Hello. My name is Taylor Painter-Wolff, and I teach art at Lee. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for hearing the concerns expressed at the previous meeting on March 15 and allowing more time for the renaming process. From the emails I’ve sent you and what I said at the last meeting, you probably know that while I do appreciate the ad hoc committee for taking more time to gather additional input, I am still disappointed with their final recommendation. I was hoping we would be meeting here tonight to consider a different proposal for a new name, but since we aren’t, I’m going to take this one last opportunity to ask you to vote no on this proposal. It is my opinion that we can do better when it comes to finding a new name for such an amazing school. If the school is not named for someone or something else, it is essentially still named for Robert E. Lee. I believe that a wrong was done when the school was named for him in 1918. We know by now that there was likely much negativity at work in the motivation to name things after Robert E. Lee and other Confederate generals during that time period. Using these types of names to send a message of fear and exclusivity to African-Americans is something that happened all over the country, well into the 1960s in the Civil Rights Movement. The unfortunate intent here seems particularly obvious, though, when we’re talking about choosing that name in a place, Oklahoma, that didn’t even become a state until 46 years after the Civil War ended. In 1918, there were 60 lynchings in this country. From 1910 to 1920, there were 622. A small percentage of those lynched were white people, but as you can imagine, most were African-American. The KKK was also starting a resurgence at that time, and in this city in particular. And then, as we all know, what happened here in this very city just three years later in 1921, one of the worst race massacres in the nation ever. So all of that is to say, that was the climate at the time in 1918. That was what was going on in the city and in this country at the time the school was named. It was wrong to name this school for Robert E. Lee in the first place, and now, a full century later, we have the opportunity to right this wrong. Renaming the school just Lee does not even come close to accomplishing that. I would also like to bring up an issue that was brought up previously at the March 12 Board Meeting, the Policy 8102, which was addressed. For the interest of time, I’m not going to read the whole thing, because I know you all know it, honoring a person, geographic section of the city, an academic theme of the school, as we just saw with Unity. And then, one sentence in 8102, quote, “The selection of a facility namesake is intended to be the highest honor bestowed upon an individual, corporation, foundation, organization, or entity that has made an everlasting impact on the community.” When I read this, I wonder, what is the name just Lee honoring or recognizing if it is not honoring Robert E. Lee anymore? If we’ve made the decision that it’s no longer appropriate to honor him by putting his name on this school, then who are we honoring? So I’m hoping that we can get maybe an answer to that question here tonight to see how much that was taken into account in making this decision. And lastly, I would like to mention one more piece of Policy 8102 that I feel is relevant to the proposal before you. Quote, “The Board of Education recognizes that the name selected for a facility is a vital factor in the public image of the school system and the community. I believe keeping the name just Lee and refusing to truly right this wrong while we have the chance reflects poorly on all of us, and it says something about our school, our district, and our city. I hate for us to take this path when we have the opportunity to make a choice that could cast our school community in a much more positive light. Other cities and districts have grappled with the same issue, and we also have just seen other outcomes that can come from that, and come up with new names that honor inspiring people with the same last name, totally different inspiring people, or turned the school name into an acronym reflecting the positive mission of the school. While I understand and appreciate that 59.6% of people who were given the opportunity to respond to the survey strongly agree with the proposed name, I still feel that we have an obligation to the whole Tulsa community to really fix this and give future generations of students and Tulsans a new name they can be proud of. This is about more than just the people who are involved in the school now. I believe we owe it to future generations to be bold now. If we aren’t, we are only putting this off for future generations to have to deal with. This issue will come up again in the future. When I see the youth of today being so engaged and aware, it gives me hope that even if we don’t fix this tonight, they will fix it at some point. But I don’t think that they should have to when we can do it now. Thank you.
Mr. Dan Sinnett.
My name is Dan Sinnett. I’m a parent at Lee Elementary. I’d like to thank the community of Jackson Elementary for leading the way in Tulsa Public in this area. It appears to me that Gary Percival, in chairing the committee, had no intention of changing the school name. I believe he was influenced by a small group of parents with whom he is most familiar and steered the committee in that direction, beginning with the selection of the committee members. I reached out to Gary multiple times through email and never received a response, and I’ve talked to many parents who have had the same happen to them. The survey was born out of the obvious discontent from the March meeting, but it was not substantial enough nor carried out in a manner ensuring useful data. This would not have received a passing grade in my high school statistics class. The lack of verification and limits on number of times an individual could fill out the survey calls into question the results. Additionally, the presentation of potential names with no history or explanation behind the choice skews the results towards the status quo and against change. I would like to call out specifically the inclusion of Spike Lee Elementary as a potential school name. This question delegitimizes the entire movement that caused the survey, rendering it a joke. Perhaps that was the intention. People have assumed that every proposed name was included in the survey, and I know that to not be the case. Question 12 on the survey showcases confusion or ignorance surrounding the survey. Around 140 people wrote in the name Lee School, which was one of the questions. About 45 wrote in Robert E. Lee Elementary, which is a name that’s already been rescinded. There seems to me to be a lot of work done with the data still. There would be value in a deeper dive into the numbers instead of simply providing really colorful bar graphs to the community. Setting the survey issue aside, maintaining the name Lee School is a betrayal of the spirit in which the name was rescinded. The committee asserts that Lee School does not symbolize a surname of any kind. I know what surname it represents, and so does everyone else in here, and so will our grandchildren in 50 years. Just because the committee says it does not make it so. There is language in the recommendation discussing how it’s understood to be part of ongoing work. This is not an either-or situation. We can change the name and do ongoing work. I agree that work towards equity must continue, but why not start the work boldly? Further, the committee missed an opportunity to perform that ongoing and tangible work by presenting the names of distinguished civil rights activists without any explanation of their contributions. I’d like to use a minute to run through them. Lena King Lee was an educator and attorney, and the first African-American woman elected to the Maryland General Assembly. She fought for teachers’ rights. That sounds pretty good. Claire Looper was a schoolteacher and leader of the Oklahoma City Movement, leading to the end of segregation in Oklahoma. Ada Lois Cipiel challenged segregation at OU Law when she applied, and she was forced to eat behind chains because she was not allowed in the white part of the school. John Hope Franklin was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom in 2005 and said, “My challenge,” he was an author, “my challenge was to weave into the fabric of American history enough of the presence of blacks so the story of the United States could be told adequately and fairly.” We have an opportunity to definitively show that the ideals of Robert E. Lee are not the ideals of our school, and this recommendation does not do that. This recommendation appeases oppressors and continues to tell minorities of their place in the community, just as the founders of Robert E. Lee would have wanted 100 years ago. Let there be no question in 100 years of our motives today. We still must do better. I urge the members of the Board to vote no on this recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Nehemiah Frank.
Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Good evening, Tulsa School Board members and superintendent guests. My name is Nehemiah Frank, and I’m an educator. As some of you may know, I’m not your average educator. I’m the founder and executive of the Black Wall Street Times, and my most recent accolade includes a TED Talk. I fly to different cities, traveling to colleges and universities as a social justice advocate. My greatest ambition in my life is to witness the eradication of racist thinking and inequity in public spaces, archaic ideologies that continue to make for a hostile and untranquil environment for all that is good and pure in the world. First and foremost, I am not here to appease white people. And for those who are here to advocate for the preservation and the honoring of your sinful ancestors, such as the white slave master, his white wife, his privileged white kids, were pulled out of their comfort zones, I’m here to pull you out of your comfort zone. Let’s start with history. Black people were forcibly cuffed and enslaved. They stood in dark slave dungeons for nearly two months, vomiting, urinating, and defecating, all in the same spot. The air was unfit for res- The air was unfit for respiration, and eyewitness account was recently proven factual when scientists revealed that some slaves were forced to stand in two feet of human excrement for the entire forced stay. This hellish earthly experience takes place before my people step onto the boat. Had Robert E. Lee and his white supremacist Confederate states of America won the war, this inhumane industry could very well be in place today. Now, let's move to the survey. The ad hoc committee executed an online survey the week of April 23rd, 2018, of which there were 837 respondents. The survey revealed that 59.6% of those respondents strongly agreed with the proposed school name of Lee. I questioned the equity of this survey and find that it's quite problematic, because I can assure you that had the survey been given during Lee's reign of terror on black lives, his white constituency would have voted to maintain the name Lee. Let's move on to symbols. Words and the letters within words are also symbols. They are symbols as much as flags and idols are. Hence, if the school would have been initially named Adolf Hitler Elementary School, with Hitler School mounted on the side of the building, it would painfully agitate a horrific emotion. Then imagine if the school's name was challenged. The new proposed name is Joseph Hitler Elementary School, with Hitler School mounted on the side of the building. What is the difference between that narrative and the narrative in place now? The difference is that we are not in Germany. We are in America, the land that enslaved my people, black people, and took them through a type of trauma that is unimaginable to any human being that's alive today. Native Americans did come through the Trail of Tears. They did get pushed out of their land. But those that came to Oklahoma were called the Five Civilized Tribes for a reason. One of the reasons they were called the Five Civilized Tribes is because, at that time in American history, it was civilized to own black people as chattered slaves. Lastly, Andrew Jackson was the U.S. President, and General Lee was a traitor to the principles of the U.S. Constitution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Nate Morris.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'll be transparent. I work here in the district, but I'm speaking as a citizen tonight. And I'm trying to work through my own confusion and frustrations as to how we got to the point of this vote tonight. But I want to start, not with my words, but with the words of Ta-Nehisi Coates in his book, Between the World and Me. "But all of our phrasing, 'race relations,' 'racial chasm,' 'racial justice,' 'racial profiling,' 'white privilege,' even 'white supremacy,' serves to obscure that racism is a visceral experience, that it dislodges brains, blocks airways, rips muscle, distracts organs, cracks bones, and breaks teeth. You must never look away from this. You must always remember that the sociology, the history, the economics, the graphs, the charts, the regressions, all land with great violence upon the body." Robert E. Lee personified that. He perpetuated that. He literally fought to ensure that millions of people, the ancestors of many people in our city, experienced that visceral reality of racism every single day. We are actually talking about keeping his surname on one of our schools. And we're talking about keeping it, and I understand from a community perspective, but just to put it into a larger perspective, we're talking about keeping it to honor the brief and painless history of one community while completely disregarding and ignoring the painful and horrific history of the community of the people that he chose to oppress. We are refusing to acknowledge our own history, and I'll give another example of that. On the board behind you, there are, I tried to count, about 185 names. It's been a little bit of a long meeting, but about 185 names on that board that shows all of the school board members. The very first name, the very first name in the top-left corner is William Tate Brady. And William Tate Brady, for anybody who doesn't know, was a founder of Tulsa, but he was also a Klansman, an avid Klansman. And he was someone who, in the early 1900s, he tarred and feathered Union labor members. And then, he worked during the Tulsa Race Massacre, which has been mentioned several times tonight, as a watchman, working to ensure that the work being done by white South Tulsans to eradicate one of the most prevalent and prominent African-American communities in the history of this country, to ensure that that work was done. He built the Brady Theater and the Brady Hotel as a means of solely housing Klan rallies. And I say this, I say this because I think that we have to acknowledge, I don't think, I know, that we have to acknowledge and are failing to acknowledge the history of oppression that has happened within this governing body and has happened within this organization as evidenced by his name on this wall. We are failing to recognize our history. And yeah, this conversation has been messy and uncomfortable, and we can discuss the vital and undeniable importance of diversity and inclusion, and we can discuss our desire to move toward an equitable district. But can we really do that when we are asking our kids to walk into a school under the shadow of an oppressor every single day? And frankly, I'm just in disbelief we're still having this conversation. So, I urge you, as we move forward, as we work to think about what it means for our kids and for our community, as we work to reconcile our own history, to truly consider what it would mean to keep the name of this man on one of our school buildings. Martin Luther King, in a letter that he wrote from a Birmingham jail, told us that "shallow understanding from people of goodwill is more frustrating than absolute misunderstanding from people of ill will, and lukewarm acceptance is much more bewildering than outright rejection." Board, I ask you, with everything I've got in me holding myself together tonight, to please truly consider what it means to this community should we not move forward in the spirit of actual unity.
Our final speaker on F1 is Greg Robinson.
My name is Greg Robinson. Grew up here. Graduated from Eisenhower Elementary, Monica Sino Middle School, Bogota, Washington High School. Worked for President Obama and Senator Hillary Clinton. And came back home, to my home, Tulsa, Oklahoma, to reestablish the greatness that was and will again be Black Wall Street, the most preeminent African-American community in the United States of America. I am filled with more hope tonight than I've been in a really long time, because of people like Nate Morris. And forgive me for not remembering you all's names, but because of the courage that you have. Last time I was up here speaking on this issue, I actually referenced that letter from the Birmingham jail that Nate Morris, more eloquently than I, restated for you tonight. Before that, in this same letter, King states that he's been gravely disappointed with the white moderate, for he had understood that the Negro's greatest stumbling block in his stride toward freedom was not the Ku Klux Klaner, but the moderate. This is not about racism. It's really not. I've come to understand, folks don't walk around with racism in their hearts. That would allow you to lynch people. That would allow you to call grown men "boys" and "sick dogs" on folks. People don't walk around with racism in their hearts. I grant you that. What we do do, we walk around with convenience on our minds. With my situation and what's going to convenience me the most, that is our priority at all times. We stated it over and over and over and over. It is a matter of convenience that we are not changing this name. A matter of convenience, a matter of park benches. We are honoring or we are choosing to ignore whichever one you choose. A history in which I wouldn't even be allowed to sit on the park bench at Lee Elementary. So, as Dr. King also stated, it's okay that opinions like this are out in the ether. It's okay. It's okay that we're not all there. Misunderstanding is often just a form of ignorance. It's totally okay. That's why true leaders are molders of consensus, not searchers of consensus. Someone, right? Someone has to be bestowed with the responsibility, with the dignity, with the honor of when everyone, when the group think, when everyone is saying, "This is what we want," out of fear or out of convenience, there has to be a group of leaders. There has to be someone or some group appealing to something greater to say, "Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Let's mold consensus around a greater society. We're going to take the step to disavow our privilege. We're going to soak in the stains of our ancestors and say we're learning from that." That's why when you punish a child, you don't punish a child and throw him away. You punish a child, and what do you say? Do better the next time. We're not throwing you away. As an African-American community, we've never thrown the greater society, the more privileged society away, never. We've always appealed to our greater humanity. We didn't go and try to kill after 400 years of slavery, after Jim Crow, after a massacre. We didn't go and try to kill after Terrence Crutcher was laid waste in the streets. We continue to appeal to a greater humanity. But we can only go so far. I am extending my hand to you on behalf of our community, and I am praying to you. I am praying that you accept it and extend your hand back, please. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I'll read the recommendation. F2, rename the current Robert E. Lee Elementary School, whose name was rescinded on the April 2nd, 2018 agenda, to Lee School. In accordance with Policy 8102, an ad hoc committee met to consider renaming Robert E. Lee Elementary School. The committee submitted a recommendation for the name Lee School that appeared on the March 15th, 2018 agenda for consideration. The Board deferred action on the recommendation and asked the committee to seek additional community input. The ad hoc committee executed an online survey the week of April 23rd, 2018, of which there were 837 respondents. The survey revealed that 59.6% of those respondents strongly agreed with the proposed school name of Lee School. The committee also considered other data points, including personal contacts of committee members, community input to Board Member Percival, and a Tulsa World online survey dated March 15th, 2018. After careful evaluation of community input, the ad hoc committee, with consensus but not complete unanimity, supports the recommendation to name the facility Lee School. I'll entertain a motion to approve item F2.
Second. Discussion on the matter.
Ms. Shelton. Thank you. I wanted to first thank the Board for deferring this vote and giving more time for community input in the March 15th meeting, and wanted to thank Principal Flowers and the ad hoc committee for inviting the entire Lee School community to give input through a survey. I think that set a really important precedent. It's not required in the policy, but it sets a precedent for other school communities who are tasked with naming a facility or school building in the future. I also want to acknowledge that we, as a Board, have to look at Board Policy 8102 more closely so that there is clearer guidance for our school communities in the future in situations like this. I don't doubt, based on the survey and emails that we've received over the past two months, I feel very convinced that the majority at Lee is comfortable with keeping the name Lee School and would prefer that. And it's my impression that the members, many members of the Lee community feel that Lee has been incorporated into the culture of the school in ways that are apart from Robert E. Lee, and that it's, if we took out that name, that you lose part of the culture or what makes a Lee Lee. So, I don't doubt that. And I think that as Board members, we have the question before us, do we defer to the wishes of the majority at Lee? Or do we consider this a bigger question that's before us as those who've been tasked with the moral leadership of the district? This is a question that affects more than just the Lee School community. And so, I ask my fellow Board members to also be considering that then the decision we make tonight will outlast this generation of Lee families and teachers, that this is a bigger question for us as Board members, thinking about the message that we send to our city and to future generations. Policy 8102 is unclear about some things in terms of gaining community input, but it is very clear about the purpose of naming a building. Naming a facility is an important matter that deserves thoughtful attention. The selection of a facility namesake is intended to be the highest honor bestowed upon an individual, corporation, foundation, organization, or entity. And so, the question before us is who or what are we honoring if we name the school Lee School? The ad hoc committee has said it's not being recommended to name after an individual with the last name of Lee, and so it appears to me that we would be naming it after an organization or entity, namely, the former Robert E. Lee Elementary. And so, by naming Lee School after the former Robert E. Lee Elementary, it suggests that it is the name of the school that is most important to Lee Elementary or most important for us to memorialize for future generations, whereas I think that there are a lot of qualities about the elementary school, the culture there, that go beyond the name, that are not tied to the name, but that could be celebrated in the name of the school, as Jackson gave us one example tonight, of celebrating unity as a uniting principle in a school. And so, I think that if we were to name the school Lee School and say that we're naming it after the former Robert E. Lee Elementary School and protecting that name, we suggest that it was the name that makes Lee Lee, but it's not. There's more to Lee than the name. We, as a Board, voted unanimously to revoke the name Robert E. Lee in order to send a strong message that the diversity of our students is highly valued and that the racism that likely motivated the original naming has no place in Tulsa Public Schools. If we keep the name Lee on the building, as a Board, we leave ourselves open to judgment about where we actually stand as a district in our commitment to equity. We look back in 2018 and condemn those who in 1918 chose the name Robert E. Lee for the purpose likely of belittling the humanity of others. And I think a future generation will say of us, if we maintain the name on the building, that we prefer, in the words of MLK, "A negative piece, which is the absence of tension, to a positive piece, which is the presence of justice." And so, I beseech my fellow Board members to vote no tonight.
Ms. Marshall.
Earlier, we heard one of the educators from Jackson speak to the fact that, for the last seven years, as she entered the doors of Jackson, Andrew Jackson Elementary, as a Native American of the Cherokee Nation, she loved the school. She loved the place where she taught, but it caused great discomfort because of the name of the school, the history of the individual the school was named after, the history of her people, what they were subjected to. So, in looking at that and knowing that So in looking at that and knowing that this is an adult individual who went there day in and day out to go to work, and then we have young minds that will be going into a school called Lee, I don't know how one would detach that from Robert E. Lee. So I, for one, will not be supporting keeping the name Lee. And I encourage my fellow board members to do this right.
Ms. Keller?
Thank you. I want to start by acknowledging Mr. Percival and the ad hoc committee and all of the hard work that they've put in over the last seven months. I know that this has been a difficult time for the Lee community. I appreciate the changes that have been made in working towards our goal of equity, including their work in designing equity, as well as the changes they've committed to making in the future, like their commitment to diversity education, equitable teaching practices, and community collaboration. We began this journey back in August with a goal to live our core values, specifically equity and character. Equity includes fostering, excuse me, fostering an inclusive environment by examining biases and resolving unfair practices, while character includes facing difficulty with courage and having the moral fortitude to act in accordance with our beliefs. In my heart, I just don't think that this change is living our core values. And while it might follow the letter of the board's rescension, I do not believe that it follows the spirit. And for that reason, I too will be voting no.
As Ms. Keller mentioned, we started this back in August and from the beginning of this process, there was a lot of questions about who was in charge and what was happening with the committee that was formed to think about our school names and particularly was concerned about what was their role and how were they being consulted. And I personally made a commitment to the Lee community during that time that the decision of what to rename Lee, if the name was rescinded, would be led by the school and not a decision from the building, from this building imposed upon them. As you know, the process of renaming has given us all an opportunity to have a conversation. And it's been uncomfortable, but that's the way these things are supposed to be. It's also given us some, I think, great gifts and opportunity to learn about the names of our schools, the history of our community, our colleagues, our friends, our neighbors, and in particular, ourselves. I have personally grown from the whole experience, learned of weaknesses in our policy, which have already been referenced, and importantly and positively, how much Tulsans care about their schools. I'm grateful for that and other good things that came out of this process, including a recognition by the Lee community that it lacked diversity in its leadership and it needed to be intentional and look hard at that and make changes around that. I think that's, it's not an intangible, but it's something that I don't know that I would have necessarily expected. When I say that, that regards its foundation and its PTA. And most importantly, an examination of what it meant to retain the name, an individual who has become a symbol of modern racism. And while there were many things that the school community during this process did not agree upon, I never heard anyone suggest that retaining the name Robert E. Lee School was the appropriate thing to do, rather, Lee School, renaming the school Lee School was an opportunity to reject the namesake and say, "Lee is about 100 years of public school in Tulsa Public Schools, and we are here to show how it has evolved." The responsibility to show this rejection of Robert E. Lee, this community's evolution and these reparations is massive. And with all the ways in which we've grown through this process and how much the Lee community values its school and what it represents to the outside community, I know that they can do that, and I'm looking forward to seeing this newly. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Faith?
Aye.
No?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No? That will move on to item F3. Given the extension of the school year calendar and timing of commencement ceremonies, the board will suspend requirements of Policy 2405 and allow certain seniors who have completed all requirements for a diploma to participate in graduation ceremonies. Specifically, those seniors who lack five or fewer credits to meet requirements of a high school diploma will be allowed to participate in commencement ceremonies. These students will be notified and they will acknowledge before participation in the ceremonies that their participation in the event does not signify that they have successfully completed all graduation requirements. Diplomas will be provided only upon completion of graduation requirements. Any questions on the item? I'll call for the vote. Ms. Faith?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Well, that will move to the information agenda, and Dr. Gist will manage this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and audience. I want to remind you that information items are brought to the board for your consideration. And I want to start with items G1 and G2. G1 recommends renewing the contract with Tulsa City-County Health Department to administer the It's All About Kids Physical Education Program for elementary students. During the 2018-2019 school year, the contract provides physical education teachers free access to curriculum to address the issues of healthy lifestyles and nutrition, imposes no cost to the district. Item G2 recommends purchasing services from Hatching Results LLC to provide professional development for counselors. This contract will provide four days of professional development for counselors to develop a comprehensive counseling plan using the ASCA national model. Tulsa School Counseling Program Handbook, Tier One, School Counseling Core Curriculum Classroom Lessons, and Tier Two, Intentional Interventions. It will also provide three days of school counseling training during the 2018-2019 school year to finalize the handbook and support program delivery. The total cost of the contract will not exceed $75,000.
Dr. Decker?
Thank you, President Schreiber. I just had a small question on G1. It says the cost is no cost to the district, but it has a fund name account on there, and so I'm just a little confused. If there's no cost, why is there a fund?
I don't know. We can get that answer and bring it back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Decker. We'll make sure and do that. Items G3 and G4 will be presented by our Chief Financial Officer, Nolberto Delgadoio. Mr. Delgadoio?
Item G3 is a routine item, recommendation to approve sanctioning of the following PTA and booster clubs in accordance with Board Policy 57L7 for the current 2017-2018 fiscal year. So we have Cooper Elementary PTA, Key Elementary School PTA, Daniel Webster High PTSA, along with Will Rogers Band Club Inc. There's no cost to the district. And the rationale, sanction status provides an organization exemption from the statutory controls relating to the school activity funds found in Oklahoma School Code. Item G4 is to revise a 2018-2019 traditional school calendar approved on the February 5th, 2018 agenda, which was item E8, to reflect November 6, 2018 as a non-school day. And the rationale is the proposed calendar revision will allow teachers to support civic engagement. I will add that between now and the next board meeting, we will be meeting with the Calendar Committee to discuss how best to enhance the calendar to accommodate this change. And we'll be coming back with a final recommendation.
Regarding that item, I think it should also be noted that it's also an opportunity for families, however their day is going to make voting the focus of their day.
Absolutely.
And I know that our community will be able to do what it did during the walkout and provide supports for families that don't have opportunities to, you know, take a day off of work or just can't make those arrangements for that day. So I think it should be also just a celebration of our, you know, democracy and our right to vote. And I think, given the recent filing of the veto referendum, we're gonna want to make sure that we're all at the ballot boxes that day. So I'm really proud of the district and I'm thankful for the teacher who made this recommendation, just really on the spur of the moment. It should just provide us potentially a great opportunity to really teach our kids and remind ourselves about the importance of voting. So I'm looking forward to...
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, President Schreiber. Items G5 through G14 will be presented by Executive Director of Bond Projects, Chris Hudgens. Mr. Hudgens?
Thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber, and board members. Item G5 is to amend item E19 approved April 16th. There was a number that was inadvertent left off of the reimbursables for Phase 2. The total GMPs for each Phase 1, 2, and 3 does not change. Item G6 is to approve the Supplement 1 to the master contract with CJC Architects for the design of the library additions at Lanier and Robertson Elementary. These are all part of the 2015 bond issues. And item G7 is to enter into contract for secure entries at Hamilton, Burrows, Robertson, Penn, and Whitman. This project is currently out in the bidding phase. The next agenda will be bringing back the finalized numbers for that. Item G8 is also to assign those contracts. G9 is to approve a drainage easement with the City of Tulsa to allow the stormwater sewer improvements to be made at McKinley Elementary. This is all part of the classroom addition that we're currently under construction, and the drainage easement will consist of .23 acres. Item G10 is to approve the GMP for the secure entry projects that we just talked about. G11 is to enter into contract with Markham Restaurant for a new freezer cooler at McLean High School. They were the lowest responsible bidder. And then G12 is to assign that contract to our construction management at Risk, Trigon. This was already included in the GMP, so there's no increase to their contract. G13 was also to enter into contract with Markham Restaurant for a walk-in cooler at Anderson. And G14 is to assign the contract to the construction manager. Are there any questions over those items? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudgens and Madam President and board. That concludes our information agenda items for tonight.
Given that, we'll move on to the staff reports this evening, and I know we do have one.
We do. And I am really excited about the opportunity to speak to board members, of course, but especially the public about this work. We have, we've talked about it before, but the work is continuing to develop and community engagement has been happening, and there are exciting developments that we wanted to make sure to bring back to you to keep all of Tulsa informed about this really important work that we're doing. That means that we are acknowledging that the structure of our schools as they exist today are not meeting the needs of so many of our students and that we know that that's not because of a lack of tremendously hard work on the part of our teachers and our school leaders and families and students, but yet there is something within our structure, our design, that we want to reexamine. And so with that, we have with us tonight our Design and Innovations Officer, Andrea Castaneda, and she's gonna give us that report. Ms. Castaneda?
President Schreiber, members of the board, first, let me say thank you. I'm so happy to be with you again, talking about this topic, our high schools. And in some ways, I think it is very fitting that the topic of high schools follows so closely on the conversation about names, because it is very much a conversation about the history of our city and of our schools. It is also about the calcified history of high schools themselves. But it is also a hopeful moment, a moment to think about what can be possible for our kids. And so we want to take a little bit of time tonight to tell you about what's happening, but maybe most importantly, try to bring some voices into this conversation that are loosely representative of some of the things we've heard. So first, I do want to say, you saw this slide last time, but it was months ago, and I'm just gonna briefly say that reimagining high school is, it's an idea. It's an idea that things can be dramatically different and dramatically better for our kids. It is also a process, because learning from history means realizing that high schools have been reimagined countless times, so something has to be different to make the outcome different this time. But it is also, I think it's a possibility and a promise that Tulsa has to be one of the first cities to be dramatically different, because we see that this moment calls for it. This work is gonna be urgent, but it's gonna be thoughtful, because rushing to action is not what's gonna change outcomes. So over the course of the winter, we've done a lot of listening, actually very little talking, mostly listening, all throughout the city. We're gonna continue doing that. The spring, we move into a period where we take all those learnings and we turn them into tools. Those tools matter, because next school year is when we have the opportunity for our high schools to cast school-community teams who have a chance to understand who they really are, understand their history, understand their future, and build something new for themselves. That is what next year is dedicated to. And that leads up to the 1920 year, which is when they pilot this concept. The engagement portion that we've been in for the last few months has been a privilege, and it has been unbelievably powerful. And we have talked to hundreds of people across Tulsa. What we wanted to do now is bring you a little bit of a flavor of that. So for those of you who have quotes in front of you, I just want you to know, time to get ready. We have been meeting with students, with community members, with teachers, with parents. At the end of every one of those meetings, we say to the students, "What's something adults need to know?" To the teachers, we say, "What's something you want your students to know?" And to community members, we say, "What's something that schools or the district needs to know about our kids, about our city, and about our high schools?" So we wanted to share some of those with you. Stephen?
From a student, "Adults need to understand that it's a totally new generation. Students and technology have changed, so teaching needs to change. More passionate people about furthering not only in education, but in all facets of
From a community member, "Students need to understand that a successful life looks different for everyone, and there is not just one path."
From a student, "Adults need to understand that some kids aren't the same. Everyone was raised in a different way, and that might affect his or her outlook on schools."
From a teacher, "You are supported, you are capable, you are understood, you are enough."
This is also from a teacher. It's difficult, especially in these times we live in. Our future generations are being taught to prepare for a test rather than life. It is difficult to keep up with everything.
From a community member, "You matter. Sometimes you have to shake things up. What is your why?" What is your why?
From a teacher. Please invest in our kids, your time, be a mentor, think about how you can make a difference.
Also from a teacher. Students, we love you. Please put down your phones.
From a student. Adults need to understand that the kids here at Webster need that extra push. We need people who can understand our backgrounds and show us the respect we all deserve. We need recognition, and we need to get those stereotypes away from us. We are kind-hearted and loving. Please see that.
From a teacher. I want students to know I care about more than them filling in the blanks, that learning is thinking, talking, failing, and trying again and again.
From a student. Adults need to understand that students, one, can't do it all on their own, two, are wanting to learn in any way, shape, or form, three, not everyone revolves around academics. There's more to life than being book smart.
From a teacher. Formal school is a brief period in a person's life. Don't stress out about every single grade or class. School does not equal your future life.
From a student. My life is harder than you realize, so if I'm not in a good mood, it's not your fault. That doesn't mean make it worse.
From a teacher. The majority of our students have a lot on their plate and handle it more maturely than you could imagine.
From a student. We are not who we would think we are. We are not what we think we represent. We are not just some ghetto school. We are the next big thing.
I'll briefly say, that is my favorite kid. They are the next big thing. So in addition to learning from kids about what they need from school, and learning from schools about what they need from communities and students, we also take time to learn from the community about what they need from us, Tulsa Public Schools. Tulsa Public Schools must consider, who are the gatekeepers in North Tulsa? Who can assist them in engaging a marginalized and disenfranchised community so that at the onset, the district is demonstrating that relationships are key? The district must also go along with the idea that community common goals and missions resonate with all. I want to share this in part because this is why this can't be rushed. Relationships are key. They're key between kids and adults, they're key amongst adults, and they are key amongst educators in the community. So I hope that you guys have a small chance to feel what is an unbelievable privilege of being out having these conversations all the time. And also, how deeply hopeful our community and our kids are, and how profound a responsibility we have for high school kids who we are about to lose to do something more for them. I'm just quickly talking through process, but I want to mostly make sure that I wrap this up and leave you guys time for conversations. The engage phase, which we are wrapping up now, is really about listening and learning. That moves into a discovery phase. That is consolidating what we've learned and turning it into tools for design teams. Design teams have all of next year to work, and then they pilot in the 1920 year. So quick highlights on the engagement process. It has been a very busy couple of months. And we have basically tried to go anywhere that people invite us, and we flagrantly invite ourselves to other people's parties every chance we get. We also have been in almost every high school feeder pattern, where we meet with kids, we meet with teachers, and we meet with community members. And the purpose there is to recognize that every feeder pattern, every geographic boundary has its own character. And understanding our high schools means understanding each of our high schools, not the homogenized total of all of our high schools. We're going to churn that all into materials that we'll be bringing up for greater conversation. But it is, in short, a clear and inspirational vision for high school. It's a series of descriptions about what we want our students to be able to do, and it's the design parameters for teams to be able to do their work. This is what next school year will look like. We're not limiting the number of design teams that can come forth, but we are thinking it is probably going to be between three and four. And they'll have about eight to 10 member teams. Those are teams that are going to consist majority share of educators, but need to include community members and students. And it is to create a bold and holistic view of what is needed by the school and what is possible for the school. They'll have a whole year to do this work. They'll have coaching, they'll have time, and most importantly, they'll have the inspiration that comes from being able to do something radically different. And at that point, the end of that year, we hope to have a couple of high schools that are ready with really viable pilots, that they'd be piloting in the 1920 year. This isn't set up to be a series of gates that you have to clear, and fail to clear creates some sort of absolute failure. It's designed to be able to let teams move at the pace that they're ready. And being ready is key. And so our commitment is to support the teams. The team's commitment will be eventually to dream big and be ready to do everything that they have within their immediate field of vision and power to transform their own high school. I'm going to stop there and turn it over to you guys for questions.
Would it be possible to provide to the Board a, maybe, plot with kind of the different areas that you've done meetings in, so that we can see within our own districts? Even within our own districts, we have very different ends of the spectrum, so want to make sure that it wasn't just in District 7, but that definitely we included 61st and Peoria, just like we included, you know, 61st and Hudson.
Yes. I think we can absolutely do that.
Great. And if we still have time, if there's things or communities that we think were missed, is that correct?
Yes. There's always time to listen and learn more, and we will make more time if we need it.
Thank you. Ms. Shelton.
Can you speak to that? How did we go about selecting students and teachers and community members for focus groups, so we can be sure we have a really representative sample of our city?
Yeah. So when we were in geographic feeder patterns, we went to the schools and met with every administrator. Part of what we said was, can you give us 10 to 12 kids, and please focus on kids who are on the edges, the extreme edges? Because we want to understand the experience of the students who are really, really thriving, and also really, really struggling. If we can understand those, we're going to understand a lot about the middle. And we did that in part to emphasize the importance of having a really diverse array of students. And having been in most of those, I can tell you, we had incredible diversity of students by every single measure. In communities, we worked really hard to build meetings that represented everything from parents to youth development organizations, faith organizations, people who may not always be in on the conversation, but have a unique perspective that we want to bring to the conversation. So we built those lists as expansively as we could. And then we sought to expand them even more, because in every single meeting, we asked, who else do we need to talk to? And then we added those people to the list. And then in terms of even broader reach, we have really tried to go to virtually every organization that will host us. And that has been everything from the Chamber of Commerce, small business organizations, to RISE. We have really tried to run the full circuit. And as I said, for anyone on Facebook Live, we are still able to come to you.
Ms. Fait.
The community meeting that I went to was at Hale Library. And she's right. It had a very wide community effort of small businesses, large businesses, people who were working within the school. And I can't wait to hear what these high school kids have said to you.
It's inspiring and, at times heartbreaking, and in all ways, really, really important information.
Thank you. From there, we'll move to Board Member Reports and Concerns. Board members have reports from committees. The Portfolio Committee met just prior to this, and will meet again in two weeks. And we discussed possible expansion of street school, Greenwood Leadership Academy's annual renewal, as well as the Future Kit facility. Those matters were discussed at Portfolio. We don't have any citizens' comments this evening, and so we'll move over to Dr. Gist for her report.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by just acknowledging that today was the beginning of Teacher Appreciation Week. And I know that all across our city right now, schools, partners in education, parent-teacher associations, students, members of the district office, and certainly members of this Board of Education have been doing our part to make sure that while we want every day to be Teacher Appreciation Day, we want to take this special week to really lift that appreciation up in a significant way and make sure our teachers know how much we appreciate their hard work and their incredible contributions to our community. And so more to come on that. We'll continue to share pictures and events and so forth from Teacher Appreciation Week on social media as we continue through the rest of this week. Our hashtag is #ThankATeacher. So if you are out there and you're taking photos or sharing stories and whatnot, we would love if you use that hashtag. I also wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge the conversation tonight about our school names. And I want to go back to something that Board President Schreiber mentioned about the work of the Community Advisory Council. I want us to think about the months of work that the Community Advisory Council put in. And I want to acknowledge that the idea that we launched into with that work was that the members of that council and those of us who went along that journey with them imagined that we would be able to, we knew that we would be learning, and we knew that we would be on a path of discovery with one another. And we imagined that we would be able to share that experience with the broader community. And we tried. We had our video crew come and interview people. We tried to figure out a way to share it more broadly with the public. And I think what we discovered was that these kinds of conversations are not really the kind that you can share in that way. This is the type of experience that we have to have directly in order to truly learn and grow and understand. And so for those of us who were able to participate, it was important work. And it was hugely enlightening and a big learning experience for all of us. I do believe that our community has moved. I do have a tremendous amount of confidence in Tulsans. I am proud of the fact that in our city, we are not having a debate about whether Robert E. Lee should be Robert E. Lee. I shouldn't be proud of that. That should be a given. But unfortunately, it isn't across our country right now. And so I want to acknowledge that as a city, we are a city of people that at least has gotten beyond that starting point. And while, like I said, that should be not something, that should be something I think we should be able to take for granted, it isn't. And so I want to acknowledge all of us in Tulsa for that. Board President Schreiber talked about that herself. And so that leaves us with the question of Lee School and the conversation of what Lee School means without the Robert E. And can the Robert E. be taken away or not? I want to say I'm deeply grateful to the Lee community, and I'm impressed with the way that they have entered into this dialogue. And it has not been easy. And it's been really tough for a lot of people in the community at Lee School. And I want to just acknowledge that. But they have shared their contrasting views, and I believe that people have moved. This conversation is ongoing. I also wanted to acknowledge this Board of Education. And I want to say that it is so important that Tulsa understands that without any hesitation, I know that every single member of this Board of Education is deeply committed to equity, to equality, to doing the right thing, and they have character. And they do the hard thing when the hard thing needs to be done. Regardless of the vote that happened tonight, I believe that very strongly. Tonight, we continue to learn. Tonight, we heard from a number of people in our community. We heard from Nate. We heard from Nehemiah. We heard from Greg and others. And we are all called tonight to do more. We were all challenged tonight on where we are right now, to get out of our comfort zones, to consider what has been done for the sake of convenience, for the sake of comfort, from a place of privilege, and what that means to us and what it means to others in our community. The Board policy, the way that it's written, described a local, school-based ad hoc committee. And this Board of Education has, from the beginning, made a commitment that they were going to take that recommendation very seriously. And that's the reflection of what you saw happen tonight. They honored the work of the school community. I do think, however, we, as Tulsans, need to continue this work that we're doing, whether it's about school names, or it's about disproportionate results for students in our district that break down based on race, based on income, based on other factors. This is work that is ongoing. It is deep, it is important, and we have to continue confronting it. And I am proud and grateful to work for Board of Education that I know is committed to supporting us as a school district as we continue diving deeply into that work. So I don't know what that means exactly for any of us, but I do know that we have a lot more work to continue doing. And that concludes my remarks. Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. We do have a nonroutine item this evening. We have a motion to enter into, or we have a recommendation to enter into a resignation agreement with Jerrell Smith and to authorize its execution by the Board President and Board Clerk. Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
Some moves.
Second.
Any questions regarding this matter? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton.
Aye.
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 Aye. Other nonroutine items, Mr. Wade?
No.
Any new business? Move to announcements. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, May 21st, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Shale Selman Room at the Education Service Center, 3027 South New Haven Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
Second.
I'll call for the vote. Ms. Fait.
Aye.
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 Aye.